Call the meeting to order, real call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Selaya.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mondana will be here approximately at 6:15. Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Will Rich.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Need a motion, please?
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second. We have a motion and second to adjourn to executive session, any other discussion? Hearing now, I call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries, we're in executive session. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Second. We have a motion and second to adjourn from executive session, any other discussion? Hearing now, I call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, would you stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time in this place. Father, we ask that you be with us to give us godly wisdom and guidance. And we pray, Father, for protection for our first responders, we pray for protection for our children, for our community. We thank you, Father, that we can make decisions that will be beneficial to the town of Florence. And we ask for your guidance and your leadership. And we pray that we will hold our positions, be responsible in positions that we have been placed in, and that we will have integrity and professionalism. And we thank you for all things, in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance is to the Father, and to the Father who governs, and to the Republic of America, for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. This will be the first call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town of Florence. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call with public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion, legal action. And I know there's quite a few people here tonight that want to talk about the the medical marijuana issue on the CUP. I have these here. If you want to wait for the public hearing on that, please let me know as I call your name. Samantha Schultz. Wait. Judy Highland?
I don't want to talk about that.
Okay. Uh...
She doesn't want to talk about it.
Okay, do you want, and now in public comment, or do you want to wait? I mean, you can go right now in public comment on this issue.
Medical marijuana?
No, no, this is, uh, this is open to the public at this time. Please order.
I'm not very good at this. Okay. Um, I'm here to address the council.
Would you state your name and where you're from?
I'm 22 West Suaro Drive, Queen Valley, Arizona, 85118. I'm here to speak on behalf of the issue of the building permit and the permit to open for Big Quick Barbecue on Highway 79. My question to the council is, it seems to me that the people from Big Quick are being asked to do things that no other business in town is being asked to do. And I would like to know why. Um, the latest is they want a push-button door opener. No other building in town has one, not the town center, not town hall, not the fire department, not the community development, not the post office, no one. Why are they being asked to do this? The town publishes on their website that they follow the 2006 building laws, or building codes. It doesn't say that in the building codes for 2006. It doesn't say it in the accessibility codes for 2003. So why are they being asked to do this? They've been asked to submit engineering drawings. Um, I don't believe that LMB were required to submit engineering drawings. I don't believe that A&amp;M were required to submit engineering drawings. Why is Big Quick's being asked to submit engineering drawings? Has the town received complaints from people who don't want this to open? I would like to have the council look into this. I would like to see some answers. They've been held up for almost two and a half months. They're being, every time they come into town hall, they're being told, oh yeah, that's fine, but you have to do one more thing, one more thing, one more thing, one more thing. This is not right. A citizen of this town was told to leave your planning and zoning office because, not because he was being rowdy, not because he was being loud, not because he was causing a scene or doing anything inappropriate, because they didn't like what he said. And that's wrong. This is a public building. These are public servants. You asked for the Lord's help to help you do integrity, act, do your jobs with integrity. And where's the integrity in this? Why aren't you using the same standards for every single building or every single business in this town? You want to have Florence to grow, but you have a whole Main Street full of empty buildings. Why is that so? You're spending money on planters and on brick sidewalks and all this wonderful stuff, but you have no businesses. Anyway, that's just, I just wanted on the record that I support this business. I think it's a good thing for Florence. It's out on the highway. It doesn't affect the main street of town. And I just want to know why the same standards aren't being held for all businesses in this town. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Brian Foster, did you want to talk now or during the public hearing on the zoning?
If I could wait, please.
What, we wait?
Wait, yes, sir.
Amy Fuller, same question?
I'll wait, thank you.
Randy Rosain?
Uh, this is, uh, this is time for that now, for what you wrote on here. Yeah. Mayor, council members, Randy Rosain, 525 Butte Avenue. Somebody might think it's kind of strange that I'm actually talking at this point, but I didn't come here to talk about the medical marijuana dispensary. There's plenty of argument there, and mine doesn't add much to it. Everyone knows how I feel about it, so I'm obviously selling my building for it. So with that being said, I was driving down Main Street today, and I did an obituary on businesses in this town. So as I'm driving down Main Street, I go where, why the, Secondhand Rose. There was a Photoshop in there, Cody's is closing. The, uh, uh, General Store is gone, Gibby's is gone, Artie's is gone. The silk screening place that was in the Silver King is gone. The Indian Jewry Store is gone. The, uh, the pit stop is gone, the, uh, or the bottle shop, I should say. The Mosaic Clothing Store is gone. The antique store is gone. The ice cream shop is gone. Dog 727, which is located where Big Quick is trying to open at right now, is gone. The, uh, the feed store is gone, and last, the water company is gone. I think we got a problem. So I have experienced over the last 11 years of Olden River Bottom Grill and taken it from, well, just an old bar, to a pretty neat place to go now and stuff. But we can't make it in this town because we don't get enough local business here to sustain us year-round. So in any case, whatever your vote is tonight when it comes to dispensary and stuff, River Bottom's done. But I would like to advise that I've seen some things that are inconsistent with my own dealings with planning and zoning when we was trying to open up the Rio Inn. And after a year and a half of discussions with planning and zoning, uh, and on something extremely simple, then to go to find out that the ADA compliance that they had to hold us to and stuff was not even relevant to what we were doing because we were under five rooms. And there again, we've lost a business, Rio Inn, at the old Clemens House. Never happened, and it could've. Now, there's a, you know, a little Mexican store down here by the Shell Station and stuff, and they got open pretty easily. And I did a walk-through it because I've had enough experience trying to get through planning and zoning to see what their ADA compliance level was and stuff wasn't even close. But I do believe that place should be open, and I think it's fine that it doesn't comply. Nor does ADA say you have to comply in order to open your business. So I think there needs to be a little bit more search into ADA, perhaps have ADA come down to explain some of the rules and regulations that caused some of these new businesses to try to start up. You're kind of okay if you have it going. But, uh, if you're trying to get going, you know, we're losing businesses and getting them started. I can guarantee you guys, there is way, way better methods to use to help our town grow up here and stuff. I mean, you guys should be afraid of the list I just left you. That was in the last four years. That's pathetic, in four years to lose that many businesses on Main Street. You know, it's embarrassment to me when people say, what do you do when you come to Florence? Because we're one of the few companies that actually attract people from out of town. We bring out-of-town revenue into our business. Us and the Windmill are probably the only two companies that mainly do that. And every one of those tax dollars that we generate goes to the town, but yet only 15% of our business comes from this town. So what do we, what do I tell people what to do? Well, let's say you can go to the, now this is interesting, I'd send them to the hardware store.
Okay, Randy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Scott, you on wait? Linda?
Ellen.
Oh. Rex Shiz? Who, uh... You got an idea on that one?
That's Paula.
Rocky, is that you? Did you make a request, Rocky?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to wait now or for?
I'll wait.
Okay. Ryan Mitchell?
Wait.
Miguel?
Oh, wait.
Okay. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council on any public issue? Seeing now, I call, call close the...
Mayor, council. Uh, item eight, eight A, public hearings and presentation. Public hearing on a minor general plan amendment to amend the town of Florence Town 2020 general plan future land use map to change the land use designation on approximately 39.8 acres from employment light industrial to medium density residential one, and for discussion approval disapproval of resolution number 1425-14. A resolution of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving the Magic Ranch 80 minor general plan amendment, Mr. Eckhoff will be presenting.
Mayor, council, I'll make this, I'll make this brief. We do have two rather simple minor general plan amendments on the agenda tonight. Uh, the first one is a 40-acre site. Uh, the second one that we'll talk about is just an 11-acre site. But both of them are within the Magic Ranch annexation area. And what is occurring on both of these applications is that the property owner, uh, which is represented by Ron McRae and who is represented by United Engineering Group, um, they are looking to prepare their properties to come into the town of Florence should these annex, should this annexation become successful. So we are working with them right now on about five or six pre-annexation and development agreements, a couple of minor general plan amendments which we have on the agenda tonight, and also some zoning amendments. The goal ultimately is to accomplish these things and come into the town of Florence and develop their property successfully as they are planning to do in Pinell County at this, at this time. Uh, the first site, as you can see on your, on your map, is just a 40-acre site. And for point of reference, it's actually directly south of the mini storage facility that's on, um, that's on Arizona Farms, which is also close to Christ the Victor Church there and the railroad crossing Arizona Farms Road. Uh, they do want to go from a land use, uh, they want to do, change the land use from employment light industrial to medium density residential. And also on a portion of the site, they are willing to dedicate to the town of Florence a four-acre site for a fire station facility should the annexation be completed. And the land use change and the zoning, again, it's bringing their property in line with what they have entitlements to do in the county. So when they come into the town of Florence, they have the right to do that. Uh, there's a detailed analysis in your, in your report. I'd be happy to address any, any of those, uh, questions that are, that are addressed. Ultimately, the findings were that the land use designation is appropriate and suitable for the property. Um, it is consistent with surrounding land uses and consistent overall with the general plan. Uh, it will positively impact the property, allow them to come into the town and develop their property. And there has been a proper public notification report, um, process on this. And also, uh, this case went to the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 12th, and they have sent you a unanimous favorable recommendation. And I would be happy to address any questions you may have on this one.
Any member of the council have any question, Mr. Eckhoff? Thank you, Mark. Seeing now, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing on this item is now open. Does anybody have anything to say? Ron, you got anything to say? Now, if I understand this right, this is contingent upon the annexation being completed, is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, we have the authority to change the general plan on properties that are even with, outside of the town limits. So this change will, will stand, but ultimately, as far as the zoning and development, uh, plan, that is contingent upon the annexation occurring.
Right, and this is in our planning area?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Tommy?
Yeah, I, my only question on this is, uh, once, if, if this does go through and we, we do annex them, are they, do our building codes overlap into them, or do, do they retain the codes that the county has?
Uh, members of the, mayor, members of the, of the council, uh, they, on this particular property, they're, they are going to come in and do a new subdivision plat. So the standards of plating is consistent between us and Pinell County. Uh, when they ultimately get to building, I believe that Pinell County, I could, I could be wrong, but I believe Pinell County has graduated to the 2012 building, building codes. And we're still on the 2006 with no immediate plans to, to move to the nines or twelves at this time. So what we'll find in the case of most home builders and, and professional builders is that they'll voluntarily elect typically to go to the higher codes because that's what they're used to building to in other, in other communities. And the codes do allow you to do that. So if they wanted to come in and build, if, if we're at 2006 codes, they could build at those codes. If they wanted to elect to build to the higher codes, they could do that as well.
And then, and then as far as the review for street widths and stuff like that, we'll be reviewing that?
Yes, the plat, the plat will be done completely within, within our jurisdiction. Uh, there are, in the annexation area, just to, just to know, there are some subdivisions that have already gone to final plat. And those ones that are final platted and recorded, in some, in some cases built, then we accept whatever, you know, has already been done. But in this case of creating a new subdivision, it'll go completely through our process.
And I know we had discussed, um, previously with some other groups that we were looking at annexing the, the lighting out there. Is there any restrictions or, or that they're asking for, or anything that we're gonna?
On any of the new subdivisions, members of the, members of the council, is a good question. On any of the new subdivisions that are coming in, starting this process with us, uh, unless there's some exemption somewhere, um, through, through a legal exemption in a development agreement or something, they will come in and do the lighting and sidewalks and things to our standards.
Okay. Any other question? Hearing now, now close the public hearing. Need a motion?
Make a motion. We accept resolution number 1425-14, Magic Ranch 80 minor general plan amendment,
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 1425-14. Any other discussion? Hearing now, I call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item 8B, public hearing on a minor general plan amendment to amend the town of Florence Town's 2020 general plan future land use map to change the land use designation on approximately 11.2 acres from community commercial to medium density residential one, and for discussion approval disapproval of resolution number 1426-14. A resolution of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving the reserve at Lookout Mountain Minor General Plan Amendment, PZC-01-14-GPA. Mr. Eckhoff?
Mayor, mayor, members of the council, a lot of the same terms apply. It's just a different site and a smaller amount of acreage. And in this case, it'll go from a change from commercial to the medium density residential land use designation. You can see from this perspective that the site is generally west of the Section 11 wastewater treatment facility. It, it also happens to be, um, sitting immediately north of where Barclay and Fry's own the piece of land that, that at one point years ago, there was a sign of a Fry's store coming. They actually still own that land. Um, so there is already a lot of commercial planned in this particular corridor. What they want to do is just notch out a portion of residential so that they can develop a nice entrance into the subdivision. Uh, this particular property actually has some interesting topography on it. Um, so they'll have, they'll be able to develop a nice little gateway there and build around some of the, um, the, the small hills that are, that are on this property. And, uh, and again, Planning and Zoning Commission has sent you a unanimous favorable recommendation. The findings are similar to the previous case. I'd be happy to address, address any questions you may have.
Any questions? Mark, is this in conjunction with property that they already own?
Uh, this, yes.
North end of it?
This particular property, um, they own, and then also to the south of it, they own additional, additional property. Uh, they own several, this group owns five or six holdings within the annexation area.
And it borders the reservation on the west?
It does border the Gila River Indian, Indian community, yes.
Is the Magic Lake 80, is that under you, Ron? Is that under them also?
Yes, that's under them as well.
So in other words, they would own almost everything, or they'd have under everything south down to Walker Butte?
Yes, what they don't, what they don't have, mayor, council, is the, uh, the... You can see the lots to the, to the south, there's kind of three irregular shaped lots. And those are actually the Fry's and Barclay pieces. And then to the east of that, on the other side of, of the highway, um, you'll see a couple of other small pieces, one, a wraparound piece. And that's owned by, um, Mr. Curly and, and a group that have plans for mini storage on that, on that particular property.
Okay. Any other question, Mark? Hearing now, now open the public hearing. Does anyone have any comment that they would like to talk about? Any other question from the council? Seeing now, now close the public hearing, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 1426-14, the reserve lookout mountain.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 1426-14. Any other discussion? Hearing now, now call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now that was the last quick public hearing.
Item 8C, public hearing on PZC-06-14-CUP. A conditional use permit requested by Duke Rodriguez of Ultra Health LLC on behalf of River Bottom LLC to allow for a proposed medical marijuana dispensary on a highway business commercial B2 zone property located at 2501 North Pinell Parkway Avenue, Florence, Arizona. And for discussion approval disapproval of resolution number 1427-14. A resolution of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving a conditional use permit to allow a proposed medical marijuana dispensary on property located at 2501 North Pinell Parkway Avenue, Florence, Arizona,
Mayor, members of the, of the council, um, we've, we've been in a similar position before, so I'm not going to elaborate too much on, on the history of, of how, how the law came about and, and so forth, and the development of our ordinance. I will focus generally on the specifics of this case. And this is a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of a medical marijuana dispensary on a B2 zone property, which we all commonly know or familiar, are familiar with is the, uh, the River Bottom Restaurant at 2501 North Pinell Avenue Parkway. Um, as you know, when you look at a conditional use, a conditionally permitted use is a use that is permitted in, could be permitted on some properties within a particular zone, but not necessarily every property. So principally, principally permitted use will be a use that's allowed all the time in a certain, certain zone. Conditionally permitted use, you're going to look at the specifics of the compatibility, the location, whether that use is appropriate at, at that particular location. So, uh, they do have the use permit and, and, and Duke Rodriguez with the Ultra Health LLC is the applicant. And their plans are to modify the, the, the River Bottom Facility building, uh, do significant modifications to the building and then also to the site. And then they will begin a dispensary facility in there that would meet all of our local requirements and the state, and the state requirements. And when we look at a conditional use permit, again, I apologize, this isn't coming, coming out too clear. But when we look at a conditional use permit, um, there are several things that the Planning Commission, and ultimately the mayor and council, as you are tonight, look, are looking at. Uh, one is the site of the proposed use and the surrounding land uses. So when we look at the particular property, we can see that, uh, generally, there is no development immediately adjacent to the, to the River Bottom Facility here. If you go further north, you're gonna, you're gonna run into the, um, the lawyers facility, um, ICE, ICE facility, Caliente, Florence Military Reservation and so forth. You're gonna run into some aggregate pits, uh, and then you have to go, um, a little bit further south, and then you would get to correctional facilities, McDonald's, et cetera. But immediately, right around the site, uh, there is no development on this property. Property is zone B2. In our code, um, we do allow for the consideration of a medical marijuana dispensary in a, on a B2 zone property, um, again, subject to the use permit process, which is largely, again, looking at compatibility. We also look at the access, the access to the, to the site and the, and the circulation and so forth. This is an established site, uh, with access already and with parking. And their plans would be to improve upon that access and the parking. The biggest one really is the impact on adjoining and surrounding property if the application is, is approved. Uh, our general plan identifies a corridor as, as, as commercial. Uh, this would be a use that would fall within that, that type of designation. Uh, we look again at surrounding properties. And we also consider the written comments that are provided, public comments that are provided, uh, at, at this meeting. And we haven't had very many public comments received, um, in our department. There are some that are included in there. Uh, but I know that perhaps folks have shared some comments with, uh, with you, and I'm sure others will comment on this case tonight. We can see also, when you're looking at the compatibility, that they do meet the criteria that's established by, by the state for a, for a school, and then also by the town for all those other, for all those other land uses. Uh, again, as you can look around the site, you can see that there's largely vacant land, so it was easy for them to meet those separation, uh, requirements. Um, ultimately, in considering all that and considering the, the comments that were made at the public, the public hearing, there were findings that were, were established and that the Planning and Zoning Commission has forwarded to you. And one is that a medical marijuana dispensary is a conditionally permitted use in a highway business commercial B2 zoning district, subject to complying with applicable locational criteria. Access, circulation, and parking for the subject use conforms to applicable codes. The proposed use is located within an existing, um, building. Sorry for the, there's a typo in my report here, which supports, um, the nature of the building. Um, and it would be, um, uh, no compatibility issues have been addressed here. The, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission has sent you a unanimous favorable recommendation on this and subject to the many conditions that are, uh, that are in your report. And I would be happy to go over any of those conditions or any, anything specific in the report. Um, as far as the building, they will, uh, if it's approved, they will modify the building, the building elevations. They will do a tenant improvement. They will provide for the security modifications, pave the parking lot. Uh, there are plans to remove the, the old mobile home on the back corner of the property, um, modify the front sign, et cetera, et cetera. And they did actually get a design review application approved at the Planning Commission as well, which would be contingent upon approval of the, of the use permit. Um, but with that, mayor and council, uh, I will, I will end at this time.
Does any, any member of the council have any question for Mark? Do you remember the council have any questions for Mark? Okay, before I open the public hearing, I'm gonna make an announcement, and we're gonna stick by this. I have a gavel, I'm not afraid to use it. Some of you have seen that happen before, and I'll do it again. And before I open the public hearing for conditional use permit application, I would like to remind everyone that we need to keep comments on the case focused on the facts of the application and the conditional use permit process. We are here tonight to specifically consider whether the use of, as it has been presented to us, is an appropriate use at the subject property. While respecting that everyone has their thoughts about the use of marijuana, whether for medical or other uses, the appropriateness of the state's marijuana, uh, Medical Marijuana Act, and how the state act relates to the federal law, we are not here tonight to discuss or debate these things. So again, as I open the public hearing, please chief, your comments focused on the facts, zoning and the compatibility and appropriateness of the land use where it is being proposed. And I hope there's no question, I hope I made it pretty clear. Samantha Schultz. Oh, public hearing's open.
Chief, we're just not going to talk.
Okay. Brian Foster?
Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, my name is Brian Foster, 24051 North Hydunes Drive in Florence. I stand before you in opposition to the medical marijuana dispensary. In a previous life, before I joined education, I was a franchise business consultant. And for a number of years, I would coach franchisees how to grow their business, when to grow their business, and do it appropriately. So I come to you with experience that lives in the realm of understanding how important business is to a town, and how important, on your side of the table, I completely respect the revenue that may be generated by the, by the town. I come to you from the Zoning and Planning Commission meeting as well, that discussed the servicing 90 people. That was published in a July report reaffirmed in that Zoning and Planning Commission, that the customer base, if you'll allow me to use my business terms, would be 90 people. As that goes, must be reaffirmed, because that was not adjusted by anybody at that meeting that I attended. So the business part of me first raises an eyebrow that we're gonna open a business and allow business to operate to service just 90 people. The gentleman from the River Bottom also mentioned some unfortunate obituary numbers, but if we're gonna service 90 people in consideration, that first raises my business side and my eyebrow, if you will. 15 miles down the road, we'll find the opportunity for these people to find the service that they're, that they're seeking in a medical dispensary, just short 15 miles down the road. The question I pose to you, council members, and mayor, is, has cannibalization been considered in even the 90 people that are coming? If they're being serviced currently at 15 miles down the road, has the consideration to any tax revenue or benefit that the town may incur, whether on a short-term or long-term basis, been considered in the projection of numbers by the cannibalization of two sites within 15 miles of each other? In my mind, that doesn't make business sense, C E N T S. The other side of me doesn't make logical sense. I'm also a teacher at Florence Unified School District. As much as I appreciate the ability to stand here before you in America and, and project my opinion, I represent 8,000 students, and these 8,000 students are taught every single day that anti-drug campaigns are supported both statewide and federal-wide. And we stand behind this zero-tolerance policy as a teacher and as a member of Florence Unified School District. So it doesn't make sense for us to mix that message. It doesn't make sense for me to mix that message as a teacher or as a father of four. Customer base right now consideration, if you compare one customer projected to 88 students that are now going to be educated why this is going to be allowed, finally, I'll tell you that our buses roll by this location all the time. My son and daughter come to school riding by the proposed location that you are considering. That'll be the advertisement that represents Florence Unified School District, not only for kids attending, but as well as for kids playing sports to and from. Please consider the impact to the children. If you're not prepared to make a decision of no tonight, I ask you to table that decision. And I simply ask you to table that vote. As the annexation is, is concerted, and as the annexation is considered, if it's within the legal realm for you to consider taking this to the people and allowing them to vote after you have the face of folks, that would be appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amy Fuller. Dr. Fuller, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. My name is Dr. Amy Fuller. My office is 1,000 South Main Street, Florence, Arizona, and I live at 3290 North Emerald Creek Drive in Florence, Arizona, also. Not only am I the superintendent of Florence Unified School District, representing over 8,000 students, 1,000 employees, in 12 different schools, but I'm a resident of Florence. I just wanted to go over some statistics from the Colorado governor, the governor from Colorado, who spoke at the National Governors Association meeting in Washington about a month ago. One of the things that he said is that the most serious consequence of their decision was the higher marijuana use by youth. With the easier access of this drug and subtle messages that pot is not dangerous, Colorado must lessen the effects of tragedy of its own making. Using the expected revenue from taxes on pot sales, the governor wants to spend $45.5 million for youth, for youth prevention, $40.4 million for substance abuse treatment, $12.4 million for public health, and he also proposes a $5.8 million media campaign on marijuana use.
Excuse me, Dr. Fuller.
Yes, ma'am, sir.
We need to go on to zoning issues only, not on, not on, uh...
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, but you're going a little bit off, off the zoning issue.
Well, the reason why I'm giving you the stats is because if we don't learn from people who are doing this, Mayor, this is what is gonna happen to us. That's why I'm bringing this to your attention. You know, I understand how difficult this decision must be for you because of the revenue, but I'm asking you to look at the location as Mr. Foster looked at, and the consequences of, you know, people coming into town will think, you know, this is the marijuana town, then leaving our town, they will think the same thing. So I'm asking you to look at the location, and look at those people who already have this, and the consequences they pay for that decision. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Scott Bowe?
Mayor Rankin, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to come forward and speak with you. I'm, I'm a little taken back that we cannot talk about facts at the federal level, at the state level. I think that's unnecessary. I think facts need to be heard time and time and time again.
Excuse me, Scott, let's stick to the zoning issue.
I, I will stick to the zoning issue, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm stating my opinion as I can as an American citizen, as my First Amendment right of freedom of speech. But I will start with my comments in stating that I have lost three loved ones to cancer. I have had two loved ones I have personally helped through cancer. But this being stated, I am against the issuance of this, of this conditional use permit for the following reasons, that the DEA, this is a Schedule I drug, that's all I'm gonna say about that. I will also say that the American Cancer Society is against the legalization and smoking of marijuana. They're for research, but not for the distribution of it. And lastly, members of the council, though a number of states currently allow this, allow the use of medical marijuana under strict circumstances and through approved dispensaries, which we are here to discuss this evening, no amount of politics can, nor will they ever detract from the facts that are stated by the U.S. Department of Justice and by the leading authority of cancer research in the United States, if not the world.
Scott, you're getting, Scott, you're getting off again.
I am not getting off, I am not getting off, Mayor. I would implore this town, I would implore this town council...
Okay, thank you very much, you're done. Thank you. Linda Gregg?
I just want to stand before Mayor Rankin and the council, and I don't have a lot of facts and that kind of thing. I just know that I've lived here for a very long time, I've raised four children here, I've watched you raise your children here, and now your grandchildren, my grandchild. And I just don't think that it's the right message or the right business for the town. I understand that it's gonna probably generate a lot of money, and that what town can't use money, but I know for a long time, I watched some of you work very hard to put forth a positive attitude or a positive, you know, for Florence. We made little signs, welcome to Florence, we make sure that the buildings are all a certain level, and they're all, you know, adobeed or whatever, whatever the restrictions are, and, and I like that. I think that people driving in and out of Florence will see that, and that will be their first image. And unfortunately, people judge by image, first image, and people that have not been to Florence before, that is what they're gonna, that's, that's the first thing they're gonna see. I mean, they're gonna see Florence Gardens and ICE facility and that kind of thing, but that's gonna be really the first thing they connect to the town of Florence. And if there is a dispensary that's 15 miles away, personally, if it was me, I wouldn't mind driving the extra 15 miles. That's basically it. I just, I want, I just wanted you guys to know that I'm in opposition to it, and I don't think it brings the right message. And I think there's other things we can do to bring businesses also, that might prevent other businesses from, from coming into Florence. Thank you.
Thank you. Rocky?
Good evening, Mayor, and the council members. This is the fourth time I am facing, I'm here with the council to bring the same issue of medical marijuana dispensary location. I have pleaded my case three times before to support and vote yes, and today I stand here to request the council to vote no, because the applicant is Ultra Health, and they don't have the license for medical marijuana. Healing Healthcare 3, Inc., which is owned by me and my partner, Dan Narang, they have been awarded the license to operate medical marijuana in this CHA, and our name is not there on the application, nor is our name on the property that is in escrow. So I would request the town to vote no for the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Mitchell?
Good, thank you. Mayor and Town Council, my name's Ryan Michelle, live at 6248 West Montebello Way in Florence. I oppose having a legalized marijuana plant anywhere in town, let alone in the entrance. It bring, because of the, the image that it brings in the reputation. We all know that marijuana is a drug, and whether it's legal or not. I, I own a business, and as we heard a little bit earlier today, it sounds like there is a problem in town with keeping and retaining local businesses, and I don't believe any legalized marijuana plant will add to that problem, help with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Miguel? You're done? Boy, I think we ought to give him a hand. That's the first time I ever seen Miguel and I've wanted to talk. Duke Rodriguez? Mr. Rodriguez, how are you, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll keep my words brief, I'm not sure exactly what Rocky's talking about, because this book has been filed for the applicant, it does include the license that is to be hung for this specific CHA. I think, I want to thank the folks in Mark's office, they've done a really good job in reviewing the application. I think it's comprehensive, it's complete, it meets all the criteria, and we would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I had all kinds of figures and facts, and since we're not allowed to do that, that's fine. What I do have to say is, the gentleman that has applied for this medical dispensary, which is a building that only someone with a medical marijuana card that can get into, he has told you in his application what kind of safety measures he will incorporate, incorporate for the building, so that that's all that can get in, nobody can walk in because they're curious and want to know what it is. He has jumped through all your hoops, and I believe, my own personal opinion, that you do not have a legal ground to turn him down. I want you to please look at this through the legal process, not by your emotions or some of the people's emotions here in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak at this public Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Couple comments I'd like to make. The, the issue of issuing a certificate of, what do you call it, Mark?
Conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit. We have, you've been shown that the applicant property complies with town codes, applies with all town codes, is that correct, Mark?
Yes, sir.
But in the issuing of CUP, that is an issue that's based on each council member's personal belief, as if it's to the betterment of the community, or if it's not a betterment to the community. Tonight, we're making a vote on this, and it's gonna be very critical to this business, not only to this business, but businesses in the future. There is nothing in the, in the code or in the law, that states that you have to vote for it or do not have to vote for it, but it's a decision that you as an individual council member have to make, and myself as the mayor. Before we go, and I'm gonna, now I'm gonna ask for a motion. Do any of you have any other comment? Bill, go ahead. Mark, do you have a photograph of the sign that you could put up there? So people, most people won't even know what this is, though it looks just like a clinic. It doesn't say anything about marijuana anywhere. So everybody's saying that to, coming into town, everybody's gonna, first thing they're gonna see is a marijuana outlet, that's not what they're gonna see. If you, if you, there's the sign.
On the bottom right, there's a monument sign that's displayed, and there was no attached signage that was discussed in their application. So only the little, the monument.
Right, and it's got a little flower-looking thing on it, yeah.
There's a, there's a logo.
It's not a marijuana leaf or anything. So I just wanted to clear that up, so, because everybody keeps saying that, you know, it's gonna be the first thing you see when you're coming into Florence, and, you know, like I say, I think majority of people will just figure it's a clinic, if anything, because it's gonna be an attractive building. Mayor?
Tom Smith.
Okay, there's, there's several things go on here, and I know that you have something you gotta follow up on, on this.
Yes.
Every person on this council took the same oath, I did. I, Thomas L. Smith solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona and all ordinances of the town of Florence. Let's look at this. What law supersedes what law? Federal supersedes. Yes, federal government so far is saying, well, we're not gonna do anything about this, but they haven't changed the law. I will not break my oath. And if you look at the surveys, be coming out soon, the medical marijuana question on the 2014 citizen survey, the percentages on there, no, in all areas, over 50 percent. These are the voters of Florence. Thank you. Mayor? Tara?
I wanted to also reflect on Rocky also asking us to vote no. There's some things going on that, within his own business and partnership, where this is not a good thing to move forward with. Going back even further, when we had Planning and Zoning bring to us a different ordinance of where this would be and would not be appropriate for our town, with 59.7 percent of the residents in our community saying they do not feel a medical marijuana dispensary be allowed to open in the town of Florence, I agree that it is not beneficial in moving forward for our community.
Well, I have something to comment on. Okay, just a minute. Okay, is that all, Tara?
Yeah, I'll address both of those comments, too. We are elected to represent the people. A lot of times, we get to see a lot of information that the public is not aware of. I think the proper question that should have been submitted on the, on the survey would have been, do you understand the, what the purpose of this vote is? And I know that it's strictly for the zoning, but since everybody's already put their own personal touches into it, I might as well add mine. We're not voting to legalize marijuana here, and I think a lot of, a lot of the citizens are thinking that might be what we're doing. It's already been legalized through the state, and yes, the federal government supersedes, but they have stated that they're not pursuing any, anything to, you know, over the state. So basically, what we're here to do is vote to eliminate a potential for cardholders to grow legally inside of their homes, whether it's next to a church, whether it's next to a library, or whether it's next to a school. By designating a specific spot where this needs, that has to be, it eliminates that potential. Now, sure, there's a, there's a dispensary within 15 miles, but we're representatives of our community. We want the amenities for our community. There's liquor stores in Coolidge, but we're not telling our people to go to Coolidge to buy their liquor. We are supposed to represent the citizens and provide for their needs as convenient as possible. We're, you know, we're, we're talking about restricting, putting restrictions on business owners as they, they come into, into the town of Florence. We've been, we've been through this, and we've raked it over and over through planning and zoning, and we keep pushing it to different areas, all of which, you know, in my opinion, have been in compliance before, but have been pushed out on some technicality. What we need to focus on is, if this is not approved, it allows the potential for cardholders to grow next to your school or next to your church without regulation. At least this, this is regulated in some, in some manner.
Bill? No, Bill's. Go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask one clarification, Mr. Manato. Am I correct in understanding that currently it is illegal already to grow within our town because we're within 25 miles of a dispensary?
That's my understanding. I can't tell you that I know the exact location, but I remember from the past hearing that there was a dispensary within the 25-mile radius. I don't know, do we have anything on that more? Coolidge, I believe, is the location, council member. And if you're within that 25-mile radius, then you're expected to go and use that dispensary to not, to not grow it in your house. I believe if you are within the 25-mile radius and you grow it within your house, then you, you'd basically be in the violation, in violation of the medical marijuana law and the conditions of your medical marijuana permit.
Thank you.
You'd also be in violation of, not only the medical law, but violation of cultivating marijuana in Arizona. Yeah? You sure would.
You are within 25 state statute.
Yeah, within 25.
So that, that process has been.
Yeah, Bill?
No, I, we've been over this and over this, I, you know.
Anything you want to say, Ruben?
You know, I drove up from California today. In fact, I got here right before the meeting started, and when you see the issues we have with our border and the federal government, you know, I have to look back at my old working in law enforcement for the last 28 years, and I have to understand that I have to protect our community, our people of the United States, whether foreign or domestic. And sometimes, we have to look within ourselves and determine which is the best way to go. And, you know, I see enough people that come into our facilities, whether it's a local, whether it's a county, whether it's a state, whether it's a private, and a lot of the issues are based on substance abuse. And, you know, that's why at this point, I still stand against it.
Now, do you have anything?
Well, I'd like to say one more thing. This is, this is for medicinal, this is for people that are ill that need help. That's, that's all it is. This isn't, they're not distributing marijuana to everybody, you know. Everybody keeps bringing that up, but, you know, it's another example, if we don't do this, it's another example of how we do not help businesses move forward in this town. And I'm getting sick of it.
Again, I take a look at.
And we gotta look for what's good for the town. And I think there's 92, or no, I think there's 99 permits in Arizona. 92 of them are already out and have been, not applied for, but zoned, and they're in the process of opening up, or they have opened up. So it's not like, I don't think 10 P's gonna collapse because they've got one or Scottsdale or Casa Grande or Coolidge or Superior, any town. So, you know, we're just not, we're just not business-friendly here, appears to me.
Mayor, one more comment. I think we need to keep in mind that this is a zoning issue and it's not a personal feelings issue.
That's right.
The.
It meets the criteria or it doesn't.
It is a zoning issue, but it is also, as I said earlier, a personal agenda.
Oh, another thing, that survey.
Excuse me, Bill. Bill, let me finish, then you can go. It's still, it's a zoning issue, but it's still a personal, each council member has his own idea of what is good for the town, and the location is the question we have here tonight. It's not, is it something that we like or don't like? It's, does it meet our ordinance on a conditional use permit in a B-2 district that can be, or B-2 designated district? But even though if it does or doesn't, and I believe it does meet, and Mark, you agree with me, that this does fall into the classification for US, for this location. Is that correct?
Mayor, Council, that's, that's the recommendation that you have for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So we know that it is legal to be in there. Again, though, it's each council member's personal thoughts as to what's good for the town of, the future of the town of Florence. It is not anything else, and that's a question. Do you, as a council member, believe that this is good for the town of Florence or not, period, in that location?
And speaking of the comment of we're not business-friendly, I would not like you to speak for me in that aspect because I am definitely business-friendly, but it also depends on what the business is, and it also depends on what the residents, the majority of the residents of the town of Florence wants.
That's true.
But I want a sex shop business to open up in Florence? Absolutely not. So I have a right to that opinion, as well as speaking for the majority of the constituents that I have been in contact with. I don't, I don't say that we are non-business-friendly because that's absolutely not true.
This, this survey is not the majority of the citizens of Florence. There were.
I'm not basing.
270, what was it, 400, okay, 461 people.
We each have a vote, and we can just live with that, whatever our votes are. But I don't like people to speak for the group because we're individuals.
Well, no, it's my opinion how we're moving forward, I mean, what I see going on with other businesses, not just this business. As people spoke earlier, people are having a hard time getting businesses going in this town. It's just amazing.
Make sure we hear them. Make, make sure, there is always two sides to a story, so make sure we know of the story at all times.
And I'd just like to add, I do disagree with the mayor. This is, this is not a conscience decision, it is a zoning decision.
No, it's either.
It's a decision we have to make on what's good for the town or not, yeah? And that's what it all boils down to.
Okay, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we pass Resolution Number 1427-14 Ultra Health LLC, PZC-06-14-CUP.
Second?
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 1427-14. Mr. Mayor, requesting a roll call vote. Is there any other discussion? This time, we'll ask a roll call vote.
Councilmember Walter?
Nay.
Our councilmember Hawkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Walrich?
Nay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Smith?
Nay.
Councilmember Wondaniel?
Nay.
Councilmember Solia?
Aye.
Mayor Rankin?
Nay.
Motion defeated. This time, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Call a meeting back to order.
Mayor, Council, Item 8D. Presentation of Renee Klick's promotion to the position of Sergeant effective March 15th, 2014. I'll turn it over to Chief Hughes.
Mayor, Council, with great pleasure, I'd like to present to you our newest sergeant for the Florence Police Department. I'd like to tell you just a little bit about Renee. She's been a resident of Florence for over 20 years. She started her career in law enforcement with Department of Corrections. Spent eight years there, left there and came to the Florence Police Department where she was a field training officer. She was a SRO for Florence High School and for Florence K-8. She was a general instructor. In 2007, she became a detective. She took care of crimes against children. She did a lot of good work there, and just this last six, I guess, within the last six months, we did a testing procedure, and Renee came out on top. She's got a lot of great things going for her, and so tonight, I wanted to give her this certificate of promotion, making her the newest sergeant for the Florence Police Department.
Congratulations, Renee.
I'll make it real brief. I'm not good with this, but most of all, I just want to thank my family who's not here right now because he's working, so, but people I work with, most of all, for supporting me, encouraging me to try this feat, and I know with their support, I'm gonna be okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations. Good luck.
Item nine, consent. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda is called, item is called. Item A, approve a professional services agreement with Southwest Groundwater Consultants, Inc., for the siting and design of a new production well in North Florence. B, approval of the resignation of John L. Anderson from the Planning and Zoning Commission. C, ratification of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce application for a special event license for an after-hours mixer on April 3rd, 2014, from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM. D, approval of the January 6th, January 21st, January 28th, February 3rd, and February 18th, 2014 Town Council minutes. E, receive and file the following board and commission minutes. I, November 20th, 2013 Historic District Advisory Commission minutes. Two, November 7th, November 21st, and December 5th, 2013 Planning and Zoning Commission minutes. Mr. Mayor, Council, that is your consent agenda.
Any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull 9B.
9B?
Yes.
Okay, 9B. Does any member of the public have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Saying none, we will take 9B, next item. Need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written, with the exception of 9B.
Second? We have a sec, we have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 9B. You have a discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose, same sign. Motion carries. 9B, please, Tara?
The reason why I pulled 9B is because John Anderson has served on our Planning and Zoning Committee for quite some time. It's my understanding that there was a disagreement, and we were going to meet about it and talk about it, but that meeting never came to play.
Mayor, Councilmember Walter, that is correct. We did discuss having individual sessions with several members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, that never materialized, and Mr. Anderson just decided to resign from the commission instead.
You have a discussion? Tara, do you have something else, Tara?
Based upon the way that he resigned, do we want to table this to try to get the discussions going?
We asked them both, the members of the commission directly, and they just, they decided not to come and meet with council, and he just chose to submit his resignation.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, did you have something?
I would like, I would like to commend Mr. Anderson for the years of service he has given us.
Any other, do we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda 9B.
Second? We have a motion to second to approve Consent Agenda Item 9B. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 10, New Business. A, Resolution Number 1428-14, Discussion, Approval, Disapproval of a Resolution granting Approval to the issuance of one or more series of the Industrial Development Authority of the Town of Florence Incorporated Tax-Exempt and/or taxable Education Revenue Bonds, Legacy Traditional Schools Project, Series 2014A, in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed 75 million to finance the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of educational facilities for Athlos Traditional Academy and its affiliates, Legacy Traditional School, Avondale, Legacy Traditional School, Levine, and Legacy Traditional School, Northwest Tucson. Jennifer Evans will be presenting this.
Jennifer?
Mayor Rankin and council members, before you is a request from the Florence IDA to approve the resolution that would allow the IDA to issue education revenue bonds for the Legacy Traditional Schools Project. The, the, the bond issue would fund the acquisition, construction, and equipment for four charter schools around Arizona. The four schools are located in Chandler, and I do realize that your request for council action says Gilbert. There was a little confusion in the early stages of this process as to where that school was located, but it is, in fact, in Chandler. And there's also other schools in Tucson, Avondale, and Levine. And this bond issue would be very similar to previous bond, bond issues that have been handled by the Florence IDA. There's no liability that would be incurred by the town of Florence or by the IDA, and there's no fiscal impact. If you, for any questions, we have Mr. Peter Via Verdi, the president of the Florence IDA, in the audience, who's available to answer any questions.
Anybody have any member, a question for Peter? Peter, would you like?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would like to defer to our attorney, who knows everything about IDAs, if you might have a question specifically of the ones before you today.
Member of the council, I got some. Oh, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be back before you again and see you. You may recall that approximately a year ago, a little over a year ago, you approved the proceedings of the Florence IDA for the issuance of bonds for two other charter school facilities owned by the Legacy Traditional School Group. And they were very pleased with the relationship they've developed with the Florence IDA, and when this matter came about, they came back to Florence to have these done. If I may briefly just introduce a few people that are here tonight. these done. If I may briefly just introduce a few people that are here tonight. One is Aaron Hale of the CFE Management Group that owns and operates the charter schools. Mr. Hale is here. Uh, Mr. Bruce Sorenson from the, uh, underwriting firm of Piper Jaffrey came down from Minneapolis for the good weather and, uh, and for the pleasure of being here in Florence. Bridget Finley Green, uh, serving as bond counsel. She's a member of the firm of Greenberg Traurig, and I think you've seen her on a number of occasions before. And Mr. Daniel Bank, uh, of the, he's the CEO of the Legacy School Group, and they're all here in person. Earlier this afternoon, the Florence IDA Board unanimously adopted its resolution approving the issuance of the bonds. A copy of that resolution has been filed with the clerk and is here before you this evening. So, uh, I'm here to answer questions you might have, if any, in addition to what has been provided by your city staff.
Any question? Okay, let me ask you. How much money is the IDA making off this deal?
That would depend in the end of what the actual amount of the bond issue is. But let's say it's, uh, seventy million. Uh, the initial fees during the time that seventy million dollars of bonds would be outstanding, the annual fee the IDA would get would be seven basis points against that, which would come to forty-nine thousand dollars.
A year?
That would be in the initial year. But the bonds, on all of these issues, the bonds mature and get paid off, so the amount of money that's received reduces on an annual basis.
So, you're saying approximately, rounding off, uh, you're saying approximately fifty thousand dollars a year to begin, and then?
Forty, forty-nine thousand the initial year, reducing over time as the bonds get paid.
Right. You know, on the last bond election, do you know what the payment was last year to the IDA?
On the last?
The last one we did for the IDA, how much was that?
That was one near the end of last year for Telus Charter School, and that was in the approximate amount of, my recollection, around five million dollars. And that would have resulted in a fee initially in the first year of thirty-five hundred dollars.
And the first bond we did with Legacy?
Pardon me, sir?
Didn't we do one with Legacy before? This is your third shot?
Yes, yes. It, it, there was one for Legacy previously, and that would have been in the area of thirty million, twenty-one thousand dollars, somewhere in that range. I don't want to get tied to exactly knowing exact amount of the bond issue, but that's the range it's in.
Okay. I don't know about the rest of the members of the council, but from past, uh, I have a question with, are we doing the right thing? And I guess my question is that I still have a problem with private schools and charter schools. They're taking state money out of the public school system. It really, it upsets me to that fact that the taxpayers of Penal County or everywhere in the state are putting their tax dollars into private, nonprofit, and for-profit businesses, when the public school system is in such need of this money that they're taking out. And it just, it kind of upsets me a whole bunch on the whole system that's in place in Arizona at this time. On the money the IDA makes off of it, the council has no idea of how that money is spent. The IDA does not have to show us how they spend that money. We just had a project here in town, we asked them for help, and they turned us down. Give us a minute, uh, two thousand dollars to, uh, build a sign. I, for one, am going to vote against this due to the actions the IDA and my belief on the, on the charter in private school. I don't know if anybody else has any ideas on it or not. If, if nobody else has any ideas, then we need a motion. Make a motion to approve? Do we have a second? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second.
Item ten B. Resolution number 1429-14, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona pertaining to the Florence Police Department's submission of a project for consideration in Arizona's FY two thousand fifteen Highway Safety Plan. Chief Hughes will make a presentation.
Mayor, members of the council, what we're doing is we're submitting a grant to the Governor's Office on Highway Safety. And what we'd like to buy is some, some very specific accident investigation tools that will help us, um, better investigate accidents when they occur. We've also asked for, from the Governor's Office on Highway Safety, a, a brand-new Tahoe and overtime costs for traffic enforcement for the Town of Florence.
Any, ask, any questions for the chief? Hearing none, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number fourteen twenty-nine dash fourteen, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona pertaining to the Florence Police Department's submission of a project for consideration in Arizona's fiscal year two thousand fifteen Highway Safety Plan.
Second, we have a motion to, uh, second to adopt resolution fourteen twenty-nine dash fourteen. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item ten C. Discussion approval disapproval to authorize the town manager to negotiate an enter into a contract or contracts with Hayden Building Corporation not to exceed a cumulative total of, uh, five hundred thousand dollars for design-built construction services to complete the proposed Padilla Park at Silver King Plaza project. Uh, Mr. Eckhoff will be presenting.
Mayor, Council, we've, uh, presented this item to you, um, in a few different updates we've had along the way. Uh, but the plan here on this property is on the, on the Silver King property and the Jason Padilla property is that we would merge the two together to develop a, a park, not a traditional active recreational park, but more of a, a, uh, a downtown plaza type of, type of park, uh, to benefit, uh, the town as a whole, to benefit our, uh, the Silver, the Silver King Marketplace building, to attract additional tenants into that, into that space, uh, namely, uh, restaurants and users that would benefit from the improvements that would be done on the, on the property. Uh, there are three major things that we're looking at and doing in those improvements ultimately is, one is a patio area that would, so you come out on the back of the, of the building, you'd have, uh, outdoor, outdoor dining, a place to congregate, a place to have events, uh, then some grass area, and then also there is a water feature or a splash pad, uh, as it may be referred to. Uh, then a, uh, grass area that would be done on the back part of the property or the west part of the property that would have a, an amphitheater type of design with a small stage, so that you could have, um, active, small-scale events in the facility or passive, passive events in the facility. We had a conceptual plan designed for the property. We went out on an RF, RFQ, uh, for design-built construction services. Uh, we received multiple, uh, responses to that. We interviewed the top four firms. Uh, the first firm that, uh, that, that scored the highest, uh, the, the staff was unable to come to terms on the scope of the project or the, or the, uh, budget. Um, then went to the second firm, which is here tonight, which is the Hayden, Hayden Building Corp. And, uh, they have, um, we have gone back and forth on, on the design. We did, we ran into some issues on this site. It's a rather small site, but sometimes, uh, small sites are actually a little bit harder to work with. Uh, but there were some challenges in getting the, uh, uh, the bathrooms into, into the adobe building. Uh, one is because it's a heavy water use and a heavy, uh, uh, vandalism-prone type of use, so we really were, uh, spending a lot of money putting the restrooms in the adobe structure. And ultimately, uh, there's a plan to build a small bathroom structure separate of the adobe structure, so that the adobe structure could ultimately, down the road at some point, be modified, uh, to some real low, uh, low-impact type of use. Maybe a small, uh, art, art gallery, museum, exhibit space, um, showcasing some historic, uh, uh, items in that, in that facility. Um, also, um, had some issues with the, for a small site. There's a lot of infrastructure to deal with on the property that's existing, and then plan for the improvements, particularly in regards to electrical infrastructure. Uh, but ultimately, after going back and forth several times, uh, we do have a conceptual plan, uh, that we'd like to show you tonight. And actually, I'm gonna go ahead and let Fritz from, from the Hayden Building Corp. come up and talk to you a little bit about, uh, who they, who they are and what they've done in this area, and then show you the latest concept plan. And should this be approved tonight, we would actually then go into a detailed, uh, development of a, of the construction drawings, and along the way, keeping, keeping everybody apprised of what we're doing, whether it's the HDAC or the, or the council, um, and also SHPO as well. Uh, Fritz, would you like to introduce yourself?
Happy to. Uh, Mayor and members of the council, my name is Fritz Bearhorst, and I'm a vice president with Hayden Building Corp. Um, staff has asked me to talk a little bit about our company and our design firm and then the project itself. Uh, Hayden Building Corp. is, uh, is a, a general contracting company, built, based in Phoenix. Um, we specialize in parks and recreation work and other community-type of projects. We've done a number of, uh, design-built, uh, park-type projects, including the Copper Sky Project Facility that just opened in, um, Maricopa, uh, last weekend, Pioneer Community Park in Peoria. Uh, that was a, a design-built project as, as well as a number of other, uh, community-type projects. Um, we also did the Browning Miller Readiness Center here at the Florence Military Reservation as a design-built, and the Florence Field Maintenance Shop that was the, actually the first project to go on that new facility out there. Okay. Um, we've teamed up with, uh, EPG, or Environmental Planning Group, is our, is our lead designer on this project. They're a, a, a well-known park design firm. We worked with them on the Peoria Community Park, um, Pioneer Park Project that we recently completed. Uh, we also worked with them on the Western Canal Multi-Use Path Project, which is a, an urban path project, similar in nature. And they've done a number of, uh, of, uh, community infill type of parks very similar to what we've got going on with the Padilla Park. Now, if I could talk just a little bit about the concept that we've come up so far with, uh, as, as Mark mentioned, we've, we've gone through a couple of rounds of discussions on the project, uh, working within the budget and the scope and the, and, and trying to get you the maximum, uh, usability in, of the project. So, we've come up with a concept that's, uh, that's centered around a, a lawn gathering area, as well as a great lawn that has a, a platform stage and a, and a berm seating area. We've incorporated some shade trees, as well as a dining patio over by the Silver King, um, the Silver King Hotel, uh, that can be used for breakout space for the, for the, the restaurants in the, in that facility. Uh, we've got a turf plaza area that can be used as a gathering area, um, a splash pad that we're, we're gonna try to integrate with the old foundation out there, um, as well as a restroom building and, um, and, like I said, working around the, the historic foundation. So, um, we also have, are going to bring it with a, an iron fence all the way around the perimeter. So, we, we think that we've come up with a, with a good workable plan and, and, uh, arrived at a, at a concept with staff that we think will work. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If, if you have any questions?
Do you have any questions for him? I, I've just got one question.
Sure.
And we're in a situation where we're in a drought, and we're planning for all this grass area. Is that the way to really go?
Well, the, uh, the main idea behind the grass is to provide a, a cool inviting place for people to gather. I think, uh, um, there's an idea of using this for, for movies in the park and for community gathering. Um, we can certainly look at the options of cutting down the amount of grass that's out there. You know, that would be something that we would work with staff on, what the, what that, you know, what would work best for the community.
I guess, you know, I'm taking a look at the drought that we're in and the amount of water it's gonna cost. We're not, we, we won't be irrigating that reclaimed water. It'll be well water that we'll be using. And I, I'm just, I'm very curious about, uh, the estimate on the cost of keeping that green on a yearly basis. And I, I, you know, I've let my lawn go because of the cost of the water that we're doing now and all the water we pump. I, I'm just curious, but I mean, it looks nice and everything, but I'm, I'm just curious about the cost of, what it's gonna cost to maintain the park as we go along, if we have that much grass. So, that's something we can work on as we go along with the project.
That, that's correct. This is just a concept, and obviously, we will work with staff to develop something that fits the town's needs and responds to conservation and, and using water wisely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody have any other discussion?
The trees will be mesquite, of my understanding, right? Or some kind of zero-scape trees that are low on water?
Member Hawkins, Mayor Council, uh, what we're doing is working very closely with Harold and Katie Chris over at the, uh, Windmill Winery, uh, to obtain as many plants as we possibly can from their facility for this, for this project. They graciously, uh, have offered to donate plants, so, um, we have not developed the exact palette, but we want, what we want to do is go over there and select as many plants as we can that would be appropriate in the type of plant and the size of the plant for this, for this project. And, uh, and yes, for the most part, they will be, um, desert-acclimated plants. There may be in the patio area, the potential of integrating some evergreen type of plants to create just a little bit of diversity in the, in the plants that are there.
Yeah. Tara?
I do have one question, just about the cumulative total. Did we at one time visit this and discuss it for two hundred thousand dollars, like not to exceed?
Uh, Member Walter, there, there have been a few numbers thrown, thrown out on, on the project. Uh, oh, sorry.
No, that's fine. So, uh, if I can, uh, Councilmember Walters, Mayor, Council, uh, the original amount, when we started talking about the, the park, I believe about this time last year was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The two hundred thousand dollars came from the park side of the budget, the Cabo Project, that's already set aside. The last number that we brought forth was three fifty. Looking at the bids, we couldn't accomplish that, but there was one major other issue that we had. Because of the required amount of power needed, uh, to add lighting to this park and also the ball, the ball field three lights at the existing Heritage Park, there is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we need to upgrade all that structure at some point in time. So, we added it to this budget. We're gonna need to upgrade the power lines through APS, the conduit or the transformers, uh, at some point later this year. And so, we'll make sure that that portion is put back in, uh, to a budget request coming to council.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? Need a move? Oh, go ahead, Tom.
There's only one thing. I mentioned this one before, which is a very native bush for out here, which grew real good, and that was the Hohoba Bush. It grows just east of town. And they grow wild. They don't need, and they are green year-round.
Buck brush. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we need a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the town manager to negotiate and enter into contract or contracts with Hayden Building Corporation not to exceed a cumulative total of five hundred thousand dollars for design-built construction services to complete the proposed Padilla Park at the Silver King Plaza Project.
We have a, a motion to authorize the town manager to negotiate and enter a contract, uh, with Hayden Building Corporation. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Managers report.
Uh, I have nothing to report this time, Mayor.
This is the second call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Town of Florence. Same rules apply as the first call to the public. Does any member of the council have anything, Denise? I mean, any member of the public?
Denise Coler, I'm very disappointed in the vote this evening. And in my prior speech, I couldn't give you some figures, but I would like to do that now. Do you know in the U.S. every nineteen minutes, someone dies from prescription drug overdose, but there is no documented case of death from marijuana overdose? Do you know for adult users, dependence on heroin is twenty-five percent, tobacco is thirty percent, marijuana is nine to ten percent? Do you know in nineteen forty-four, Mayor LaGuardia of New York City commissioned a research by the New York Academy of Science on marijuana? Their findings were A, marijuana did not lead to significant addiction, B, no evidence it led to morphine, heroin, or cocaine addiction. Do you know in nineteen forty-three, marijuana was part of the U.S. drug pharmacopeia? Do you know in, that President Nixon impaneled a blue ribbon commission on marijuana? They found marijuana wasn't a gateway drug and should be decriminalized. He didn't like their report because that wasn't what he- He didn't like their report because that wasn't what he wanted to hear. He ignored it and started a war on marijuana. Do you know in nineteen ninety-nine, Congress commissioned a study on marijuana? The conclusion was there was no conclusive evidence that the effects of marijuana are causally linked to substance abuse of illicit drugs. I could continue because there are many, many, many studies that were done on marijuana. There's a myth about marijuana and it just keeps being perpetuated. I felt like, when I, I did a little looking up, obviously. And I felt like I needed to say that because, all these facts, but I wasn't allowed to before because you were discussing the zoning. And that's what I wanted you to concentrate on was the zoning. I don't want my, I wouldn't want my underage kids drinking or smoking even cigarettes, but this clinic isn't about underage kids. And it's not about it being the entrance to Florence. I don't want to be mean, I live here. But the first thing you see when you come down off that hill, wherever it is, are the prisons, nothing else. So to say to have a clinic out there is detrimental to this town is silly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience? Harry Nunn, called the public, called the council, Tommy?
I have nothing.
Reuben?
I just want to point out with the school district, Florence K eight was involved with a trip to the Oceanography to California, as well as they were also involved with a trip to the Catalina Islands for science. Oh, I thought that was really good.
Is that where you got sunburn?
Right, I got sunburn. Staying.
Tara.
Just want to thank everybody that came out tonight, especially to voice their positions and their views. I want to congratulate Renee Clicks on her promotion. She is a really hard worker. She's been with our community for a really long time, for at least ten years. So, really, thank you. Great job.
Bill? Yeah, there was a, a gentleman, Jerry Robert, wrote a letter to the editor in the paper. And I just want to answer some of his questions. He put in there, Councilman Hawkins made comments on the Kuhn Building. I'd like him to explain, what is the time schedule for the building's collapse? I'd also be interested to know on whose authority he based his remarks. Did he survey the building himself? Yes, I did. Uh, did we have an engineer come to this conclusion? Yes, we did. And then it says, uh, does Councilman Hawkins know how much time and effort was put into saving and rebuilding the Clark House and the Florence Hotel? I absolutely do. Uh, Mr. Kramer has been a lifelong friend until he passed away. I was very familiar with the Clark House and, and also with the Silver King Hotel. And, uh, I just want, you know, I, he goes on to insinuate that I, that apparently I don't have time to pay any attention to what's going on. I'd venture to say I, and you can check with staff or probably any other council member. I probably work as hard at being a councilman as anybody. And, uh, you know, I just don't appreciate people, if, you know, my phone number's listed in the, uh, with the town and I'm open to people getting ahold of me if they have any questions, but to, uh, question me in the paper, I'm very accessible from six in the morning usually till ten at night. I've got my phone with me, so anybody that has any questions is welcome to call me anytime.
Valerie?
I don't have anything to say.
Tom?
I've got a few questions for staff mostly. We have a new budget coming up and it's already March. This time, I think we need to see the full budget and time to study it and need a workshop on the budget. Second point. Possible purchase of Johnson Utilities. Everything we've done has been an executive session. Therefore, we cannot state to the people of this town many of the items we know. It is my belief, therefore the press doesn't know everything they should know. So until we hold a work session on this, open to the public, we're not being transparent to the people of Florence. We need to get this done because there's a vote coming up at the end of April for the voters of Florence on this subject. And if they don't know the facts, how can they vote educationally well? We need to get this done. The third thing I have is on this big quick barbecue. I'm looking at a lot of little items that came up and that got extended and changed and so on, but the one thing on that automatic door is kind of funny. I mean, one thing was they actually told them that you need a door that turns out. They did that. Then they came back and said, you didn't have a permit for that. That's one thing. Now, I have one side of the story. That's why I'm asking staff to get back with me on this and let me know exactly what's going on. Because the other one was they needed an automatic push bar on the door. Fine, they did that. The third thing was, then they said, no, you need one of those buttons that you push will automatically open. And again, I agree with the lady that talked to you today. Other than the bank, I don't know another one, a door that opens automatically, period. And there have been several buildings being worked on and reconstructed just recently. One just finished, well, actually two are now open today, but they don't have them.
We don't have any in the gardens either.
So why are we picking one business? There's something wrong here. I need some information and I sure the rest of the council would like it also.
On the Johnson Utilities, I'd, I'd like to address that, uh, that Tom brought up. Until the facts are completely known by the council, it would be not advantageous to go out with any information that has not been confirmed or agreed upon prior to the vote. I don't want to give the community one number and then have to come back and change it again because I didn't give them the right number. I don't want to give them any information that we have to come back and say that we have, oh, we made a mistake, we got to change it. I don't want to do that.
Well, Tom, then why are we, Tom, why are we asking them then to vote at this time when they won't have the facts?
They will have the facts, which should be coming to another executive session and very shortly. And after we get the facts, and I've talked to the manager about this quite extensively, that the election, I believe, is May twentieth. And the public has to know the exact amount of it and the facts behind it. And, and until we get that all tied down legally, I don't see how we can actually go to the public and say, and then I, Charles, you got something that you want to say on that?
Yeah, a couple of things I'd, I'd like to address, mayor. First, on, on Johnson Utilities, um, it wasn't, I mean, we've made significant advancements in negotiations, uh, with utility as far as, um, what we're looking at, the information that we've been gathering from our consultants. However, it wasn't until last week from all the attorneys got together on both sides and significant advancement was made on how we bring these documents to council's purview. So in the next week or so, I will be requesting a special meeting with council, an executive session, and most likely a study session as well, so that that information could be put out to the public. In addition, any PowerPoint and those type of things that council is aware of, I would like to get those out, so that will be occurring.
That's what I've been trying to say. We need, we need a workshop. We don't need just another executive session.
And then I'd like to address some issues that were brought up in the call to the public as far as Florence not being business friendly. I heard all the businesses closed. I didn't hear anything about the ones that have opened in the community. And I think that that needs to be taken into consideration. Florence is not, as Valerie said earlier, we are not business unfriendly. We will work with anybody, but when businesses come to Florence, there are certain codes and rules and regulations they have to follow. And if they don't follow them, then it's our job to put a stop to it, period. As far as the barbecue place, Bill has been involved in it, you got involved in it, I've got involved in it. And the whole thing boils down to, if they would have done what was right to begin with, we wouldn't be listening to this tonight, period, end of story. No matter what's been done, if they would have done what was right to begin with, we wouldn't be here tonight talking about that. Now, it's up to them to straighten the problem out in compliance with our town code. The planning and zoning division has done their job, even though I don't, and I, but I do believe, and Bill and I have talked about this, I do believe that our code needs to be addressed in certain sections as we go along in a work session with the council to see what we can do to improve on our code. What do we need? And one of the biggest things I've got is why do we need a snow load on roofs in Florence, Arizona? And that's in our code. I mean, give me a break. I mean, it's stuff like that, that is, and that's in the uniform code that we have adopted by reference that we need to go back and actually take a look at. Do, do our, do our buildings, there's not one restroom or, uh, one facility with, with handicap legal, uh, restrooms in this, in this town. That is the Greek restroom, Mount Otto's. Try to get a wheelchair in the bathroom at the old Pueblo. Can't do it. I mean, we've got a lot of things we've got to take a look at. And, and keeping in mind, some of these older buildings were built prior to ADA rules being put in place. But I noticed, uh, the, you know, there are rails and things like that. As far as the town doing anything against the people that are opening up the barbecue shop, I don't believe that's right. I don't think what I heard tonight in the call to the public is right. We are not playing favorites to A and M because if you had the complaints from Mike Bootsalata that I had, and I live right next door to him, you'd know about it. He wasn't treated any different. The L and B, there was, we had the building inspector go down there and there weren't anything we needed to do because of what they did was mainly, uh, cosmetic. And if any of you've been in there and it opened today, it really looks a lot better, I think. I mean, that's just my personal opinion. But being business friendly, people have to realize that we don't own the buildings on Main Street. And if you want to get into the position of doing eminent domain on them and condemnation on the buildings, wait for the lawsuits to start, we can do it. It's not our responsibility, it's, now, the one thing we do have, we may take a look through the fire department to get some of those buildings in compliance. And I think that that does need to be looked at on how we can go with the fire department because it's, appears that may be the easiest and best way to do it. We've got absentee landlords here that own buildings on Main Street in Florence that don't do anything with them. They just let those buildings sit. They don't care. They're not us. They don't care, they don't live here, and they're not Florence people. And I, I'm tired of listening to it. I'm tired of hearing people downgrade the council because we're not business friendly. I don't know of any business we run off, with the exception of the one tonight, and that was strictly a zoning issue and the council voted on it. With that, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're adjourned.